All right, I call to order this meeting of the Regional School Committee. Today is Tuesday, May 6th, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherborne Middle School Library. The time is now 6:37. First on the agenda, we have community comments. We provide a virtual link for those who wish to make a comment, but for whom it's not possible. If you prefer to attend in person, are there any community comments? Hearing none. Next on the agenda, we have student council representatives here tonight. Hello, Evelyn.
Hello.
Welcome. Just tell me when you want to move to the next slide.
Yeah, of course. Hope everyone's having a good evening despite the weather. My name is Evelyn Paul. I will be the student council representative, providing you tonight's student council update. So we held our annual blood drive on March 7th along with Red Cross, and it was a huge success. Dover Sherborne High School had 840 donors and collected about 664 units of blood in over 16 blood drives. And there was an average 42 units of blood per drive. The Red Cross says that each pint can save around three lives. So in total, we have potentially impacted close to 2,000 lives. That's very impressive. And on May 27th, we are hosting our teacher appreciation assemblies. This year, we are going to recognize 12 new teachers at the high school and in the department. We will also honor our admin assistants in both the main office and the guidance office. And our only educator retiring this year is our cherished librarian, Mr. Butterworth. So I will next be presenting our town meeting data summary and the response of the principals. I would assume that most of you know what the town meetings are, but I'll just give you a little bit of info. So the town meetings are basically when there are a bunch of surveys that we send out to ask all the students what they want improved about the school, and our administrators can respond to some of them. Next slide, please. So I'm going to highlight some of the responses made by each grade. All grades mentioned expanding cafeteria choices as the number one item. We're acknowledging this, and we also chose to highlight some of the other ones. Next slide, please. So, grade nine, my grade, we chose, we had a lot of complaints about classes, deadlines, homeworks, less homework, times doing in class, longer deadlines for work and projects, and flex options, you know, more options, more time to flex in, and more time in between classes. Next slide, please. So these are the responses of our administrators. Extended deadlines, those are entirely up to the teachers. It's the responsibility of the students to work with the teachers to get these deadlines extended. Less homework. We offer two to three day homework weekends each year, and in addition, with school vacations, are supposed to be free of homework. Again, students, it's their priority to work with teachers to extend deadlines and to use their DR time wisely. More time dedicated to class and studying. It honestly depends on the teacher of the class. Some teachers may offer in-class studying, but ultimately, again, it is up to the students to coordinate with the teachers and to manage their time more wisely. Lastly, time between classes. So Massachusetts state law states that we have to be in school for 990 hours. So if we were to extend the time in between classes by one to two minutes, then we would also have to add extra minutes on for learning. So if that were to happen, we would be out of school by like 3:30, and that's just, it's going to be hard for students and parents and educators alike. Next slide. So grade 10, their main things were flex blocks being cut off, more time in between classes, and building issues. Next slide, please. So for the flex cutoff time, it's necessary so that, of course, the school administration knows where each of the students are. Of course, they are open to having a more flexible time. However, again, it is up to the student. It's important for the student to make sure that they need to be where they need to be. They need to plan accordingly. Time in between classes, again, Massachusetts state law states that we need to be in school for 990 hours each year. So extending this would add extra time to the school day. Finally, building issues. All of these, filters on water fountains, locks on bathroom doors, clean bathrooms, et cetera. All of these have been, all these concerns have been sent to the buildings and the ground director. Grade 11, our juniors have asked for junior privilege. So juniors would be, with junior privilege, they would be allowed to leave school around the same time that the seniors do, like during, at the beginning of flex. More building and maintenance, and the parking fees. So, like most of the students, juniors need to adhere to the 990 hours of learning each year. If juniors were to be released for junior privilege, then if the time would be counted against them, and it would not be in compliance with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In addition, the school committee would also have to approve this. And at this time, currently, there is not a lot of support for grade 11 students having to go to the campus, partly due to the fact that it is important that the juniors are on campus and engaging with their learning during this time. I know junior year is a very important year for many, so this is important. Building and maintenance, all of these, all the maintenance issues have been reported to the building and maintenance department. Parking fees, the parking fees are determined by the business office in the central office, and they are approved by the regional school committee. Obviously, if any students or families are struggling to pay these fees, then the school does offer payment plans to help students cover the costs. And the fee is prorated halfway through the year, once the seniors leave in April. And when some juniors and sophomores receive their licenses in the spring, they will be able to have that reduced to null. Grade 12, parking issues, just like last year, everyone wants the parking price reduced. They want to make sure that sophomores aren't parking in the parking lots. Junior privilege, and some, they wanted some changes to scheduling, longer breaks in the day for the school weeks, more free periods. I shouldn't want that, but you know. Principals' response, parking fees, obviously, those are determined by the business office in the central office. Scheduling, again, Massachusetts law requires us to be in school for at least 900 hours for elementary students and 990 hours for secondary students. Simply a four-day weekend a week would be a violation of public school state law, unless you're open to eight-hour school days, which I don't think any of us are. And free periods, those are determined by the number of credits you have required over your four years. Thirty-five credits per year at our school. So it is, some seniors, they take a heavier, front-loaded schedule, so they free up more time during their senior year. It's up to students to speak with their guidance counselors in their ninth and 10th grade years to see how they can make their grade 12 more free. And again, school breaks are determined by the regional school committee. They will vote on the school calendar and determine when the kitchens start and stop, as well as what holidays the school district will observe. So that is up to you guys. Next slide. Well, I guess that is all for today. Hope you guys have a wonderful evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Evelyn, can I make one comment?
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you so much. I know you gathered data from each grade, and you organized it really well. You advocated for students, and the administrators, and the school committee, and I appreciate it. It was a very clear presentation. One thing I'm actually happy to know is many of the things you have mentioned, we have discussed at this table. So I do want you to know, even if it's not reaching the conclusion that all students want at this point, we've thought about that concern deeply, for example, parking, even school lunch. We're working through the school lunch maybe, but homework-free nights and, what else, holiday schedules. We had a deep dive to look at that. Not to say we're not open to try again, but we are partners with the students, and I appreciate you being here tonight to kind of keep us on our own toes to consider what options we have.
Yeah, and I'm very grateful, not only to the administrators for responding to our complaints, but also to the students, because I know it's very, I know many of my peers have complained how tedious these surveys are, but I feel like putting out all this data, it shows that we've, all, both, all of us are really working to try to make our school better. So I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you.
If I may just add too, thank you. In the past, we've had in-person town halls, and there was some value to that. Yet there was often a time when some students just did not feel comfortable speaking up. By going through the survey, I feel like we had a lot more student voice, and people were more comfortable putting things forward. And just so that you know, I then met with student government leadership, and we went through each of these. And I find the process to be really positive and great, and it helps me, similar to you as to here, it helps me understand things that are of importance to the students and what their perception might be. So maybe it's a clarification that we're not giving enough information, or in some cases, they're literally talking about something that I wasn't focused on, the water filter tab, and should be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on the agenda, we have superintendent comments. But we're going to hold that for now, because we have guest speakers here tonight and want to kind of move to some of the items that involve guests. So, financial reports. Do you have the warrant report?
I think we're going to do the audited statements.
Sorry, under statements.
So I'm pleased to say, tonight's the last time we have to think about fiscal year '24 as we start fiscal year '26. So in your packet were the audited financial statements for fiscal year '24, and we're honored tonight to have our auditor Bob Brown here, as well as our treasurer Pat Collins. Bob will make some general comments, but again, it's his opportunity that you've got both of our financial people here. If you have any questions about the financials, this is a great opportunity to do it. But we are pleased that we're actually a month ahead, as we were last year, and that we will be able to put fiscal year '24 to bed after tonight. So Bob, take it away.
Good evening. The fiscal '24 audit went well, was uneventful, which is what we want. Dawn and her staff threw a great job. One thing I'd like to mention about this financial statement package is that it is a package. There's actually at least three sets of statements in the overall package. One thing I usually start with is page 17 and 18, financial statements for the fiduciary funds. The fiduciary funds are your post-employment benefits trust fund and your scholarship trust funds. Those two pages, the balance sheet, statement in deposition and the revenue and expenses for those areas, are only in these two pages. They don't combine into any of the other statements in the package. The other set of statements, it's a little more familiar to everybody. Page 12 is a balance sheet for what I refer to as a fund-level statements, or pretty much cash basis. So there's a column for general fund. All your other funds are combined into one column called non-major, except for two operations which are material, so they get broken out separately. That's all based on math calculations of one operation is 10% of assets, or liabilities, or revenue, or expenses. So we, in that case, we break out the community education funds and the capital improvements funds. The general fund column on the balance sheet for page 12, you know, there's an unassigned number in the fund balance section. That's essentially where your starting point for your E and D. Then there's a third set of statements that are full accrual, one column, everything combined into one operation, except for the fiduciary funds are not in it. And that, my full accrual is bringing in your fixed assets, your pension liabilities, your post-employment benefits liability, several other, a full accrual of any revenue. So the total fund balance in net position on page nine is a negative $2 million. It's only negative because of the pension liability and the post-employment benefits liability. The unrestricted number is also negative. That would also be positive if it weren't for those two big liabilities. You know, the county is on a schedule for you to fund it. Post-employment benefits are a different story. Every government's on their own to do their own approach. So during fiscal '24, the district added $250,000 to that trust fund. And it started to approach it several years ago. It's all, it's been more difficult for the school districts to get going on that, because they involve multiple funding accounts. I mean, I think five years ago, I have three school districts, none of them had a post-employment benefits trust fund. Now they all do, and they're all contributing. The state contributed $4.4 million to the teachers' retirement system on behalf of the district last year. There's a significant unfunded liability for that with the state as well. On the budget statement, page 16, the district did vote to support the budget with some E and D, and then also fund some capital projects during the year. And, you know, there was a net plus of about $500,000 based on revenue exceeding budget and return budgets on spat. So that's always a tight one, because you operate on a tight budget. Every district does, every town does. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
I'll just add that there's footnotes in there that we don't talk about on a regular basis, but gives you more insight into like the OPEB liability, the Norfolk County liability. So if you ever want to dive in and just look at that, I mean, sometimes it's even great to me. But I think it's one area that captures some of those nuances that we talk about just a little bit, but you see more exposure. And I think it was last month, or in March, you actually got our OPEB actuarial report, which I also think is helpful, and that's used to pull the information into this, into the audited financial statements in the footnote. So that, that piece is part of this. But that is, I think, just something to give you more of the broader view of us as a region versus just a school district.
Any questions?
Just thank you.
Yes, thanks very much.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, for being here. I'm not sure if you're staying. Whatever works.
Okay.
We'll all stay as long as we like.
If it's still interesting, stay, and if you start to get bored, you're going to go. Okay. Are we waiting on the other financial report sent out?
Yeah.
Perfect. So next, we have items for discussion. And starting with the district competency determination, first for you.
Okay, so I will start and try to give you a very simple yet solid understanding of competency determination versus school graduation requirements. So in order for our students and any student in Massachusetts to graduate from high school, as of 2022, Desi explained that our students needed to show competency at the 10th grade level in math, science, history, world language, and English. To date, that has been, competency and mastery has been determined by them passing the MCAS exam in English, math, and science. We've all been waiting for the shoe to drop on world language and history, and it hasn't been. Instead, what has changed instead is that, as you all voted in November, you know, everybody in Massachusetts who went to the polls had the option of eliminating MCAS as the measure of mastery of those 10th grade subjects. Massachusetts voted in favor of eliminating that requirement. I'm not sure if Desi, at that point in time in November, was prepared for that vote, but has since then come to realize what it would mean that what was approved in November being that students need to complete coursework certified by the students' district as demonstrating mastery. And so what does that look like? The proposal on the table right now, again, the vote was in November. In February, Desi came up with a proposal of how to handle this, is beginning with our current junior class, our rising seniors, the class of 2026. Students will have to complete coursework in those areas on the right, meaning two courses in English, two courses in math being geometry and algebra II, and one lab science, biology, chemistry, physics, or technology, engineering. For our current junior class, rising senior class, they would show that they've not only taken those classes, but demonstrated mastery of the skills in those classes through the MCAS, which they already took in 2023. So our seniors are ready to get their graduate, or their competency determination, and our junior class is as well. Check. So that's what Desi is proposing for the class of 2026. Next slide, the class of 2027 and moving forward is not only will the students be required to complete that same coursework, two courses in English, math being geometry and algebra II, and one of the lab sciences, they will also have to complete a course in U.S. history. The difference between our current sophomore class, the class of 2027, and those coming sooner than them is that, instead of passing the MCAS, which is no longer an option, they will have to show mastery in accordance with the district's grading policy through the final assessment for a course, or a capstone or portfolio project, or an equivalent measure that the, or assessment that the district identifies. So they'll have to take those courses on the right and have some sort of final grade to show that they've not only sat through the course, but completed the coursework. So that's in order to get your diploma from the state of Massachusetts. Shifting to local graduation requirements. Our students also have to meet Dover Sherborne graduation requirements, and each district is a little bit different. So in our program of study, and for those of you who have, have, or had, or will have high school students, our students need to complete four years, three years semesters of all of these courses for a total of 140 credits. So as you see, our current graduation requirements, as laid out in our program studies and in the current district policy, meets the competency determinations that Desi is proposing. So we're already in line with that, and the vote by Desi will be May 20th. So assuming that they move forward with those competency determinations, we are covered with our graduation requirements, and so students can check both the state and the district requirements off at the same time. And Dover Sherborne's graduation requirement, as it currently stands, because prior to November, MCAS was part of the state's requirement, it was also part of our local requirement. It's no longer part of the state requirement, so the proposal tonight is to eliminate that from policy, i.e. have it just be those 140 credits in those areas. It is the option of the committee to maintain MCAS as a graduation requirement in addition to taking all of these courses. You do have a right to do that. We've done research with all of our comparable districts, and the majority have taken it out for all of the same reasons you are about to hear from our educators who are here with us tonight. So for those of you who know or don't know, we have Principal John Smith, Assistant Principal Tim Omara. We have English Department Chair Brechen Donahue, and Science Department Chair Chris LaVassar. And we have a guest from the Arts Department, Carly Blais, who would like to explain to you why, from their professional experience in education and working with our students, and the high expectations that we have for our students in all of those courses that you just saw listed, why they do not recommend that we keep the MCAS requirement in our graduation policy despite what Desi has done. So take it away.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. So overall, you know, just my personal take on MCAS is it has obviously provided us with a source of data, okay? Both for us to look at in a continuing basis from our elementary through high school. It also, in past years, has enabled us to kind of do some comparisons to similar districts, comp districts, to see how they were doing. And with the expectation that students would still take the MCAS, those data points can still be met. We can still continue to examine how our students do on particular types of MCAS assessments. The whole intent of MCAS was to create sort of an upward trajectory of education in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to bring, and to raise the bar for everybody. Districts similar to Dover Sherborne and other like communities often go far beyond those tenants of MCAS examination. And it's our feeling that with the number of hours of classroom instruction, the number of special courses, or tutorials, or other private opportunities that we as a school provide for those students who may in fact have had difficulty, or who have moved from another state, or have moved in from a private school, really has put a burden, number one, on that student. It really has changed their educational process. It has also put a burden on our educators and our programming that we have to do. So yes, we'll still continue to do the MCAS, but right now, with the, with the high stakes and where it's at, there is plenty of opportunity for teaching to the MCAS test. And I feel as though we've never been a district that has looked at educating our kids via a test. Even in the case of AP examinations, we've always tried to go above and beyond just test format and really looked at skill format, or looked at application format for each of those courses. So that's, you know, my perspective, and I certainly would love to also turn it over to our assistant principal and our two science and English department chairs. This would enable us to provide even more innovative instruction as we continue to move into examining more the portrait of a graduate and actualizing really what we expect a modern high school to look like. We'll be able to do more of those things. Because right now, based on the document that we provided you, you can see quite a few hours for each course is in fact spent on MCAS-type materials. It's not that it's invaluable, it's just that it was necessary to ensure that all of our students would be well-prepared to succeed.
I don't know if anybody else wants to add to that?
I mean, I echo John's point exactly. I mean, especially when it comes to our biology courses. You know, we spend a lot of time preparing those students with sample questions. We look very good with style of question that they're going to see on those exams. And the test is not a skills-based task, it's a content-based exam. And it really, our high-needs students really struggle with that. And as John had mentioned, students that are transfer students, students that are coming from a private school or from another state, it becomes quite a challenge for the students. And then we put a lot of resources in as a district. The private tutorials is something we do. Faculty obviously do a lot of work behind the scenes to get these kids to graduate and pass this. So it would be really beneficial from our perspective.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we, as a district, are moving away from doing school, like just for school, like this is just for a test. And I feel like in English, sometimes we do sort of like pigeonhole things into instruction. Maybe it doesn't totally fit, but the MCAS is coming. So I feel like, I think it's important that we kind of lean into the engagement and give kids these really enriching opportunities. And I just feel like the test sometimes runs counter to that in our classes.
I obviously echo everything that everyone has said thus far. I think what's, what's important to note too is kind of that, the flow of the school year. We talk about students being really excited at the beginning of the year. We get into a little bit of that winter slump, and then the sun comes back out and we're ready to go again. And in conversations with Mr. LaVassar, Ms. Collins, and Ms. Donahue as well, that year is planned out in August, right? So we're looking at how the full year flows. And it's interesting, because my mind is from the guidance counseling perspective, not the... not the classroom teacher. And so I see how the students are reacting to different things. And then when I'm having conversations with teachers, they're like, oh, we have to put this in here. We have to put this in here. So instead of meeting the needs of those students, kind of where they're at in the school year, in the, in the different seasons, we're really trying to make sure that we are hitting things as they go. And I know Ms. Collins isn't here, she, she had another thing to attend to, but one thing that she had mentioned to me, which was really important, is we're still administering the test, it's just not being utilized, get this word or pass, as a graduation requirement. So what that means is we still receive all that data, and we still can really examine it. Like I said, Ms. LaVassar, Ms. Collins, and Ms. Donahue put together a pretty robust, like deep dive into what this data is telling us. So we still are going to have that. We're still going to be able to identify those students who may be struggling in that geometry. They may be struggling in that biology aspect. And instead of it becoming a burden, it becomes an opportunity to share with the teachers and say, hey, Suzie is really struggling in this aspect of grammar. Great. Instead of being like, okay, we need one-on-one time, the teacher has the opportunity to kind of naturally implement that into their curriculum so that all students are kind of rising to that point, and we're supporting those students, and they don't feel like they're being taken out of their classes or being really kind of micromanaged in their day. In my time here at Dover Sherburne, I've worked with a bunch of students who have struggled, and what that sometimes looks like for Dover Sherburne is we're removing them from one of their study halls, meeting one-on-one with a teacher or a tutor or someone, and they, they really just don't like that, right? They may be struggling, and they're in class, and they may not be proud of where they're at academically. And then for us to then pull them out of a class and say, in order to graduate, this is what you need to do, just doesn't feel good, right? Our teachers are incredible, our students are incredible, and I think it goes without saying that we are, we're hitting the mark academically and by the standards pretty early on in the year. Like, we're, we're doing, we're doing our jobs. And by removing this, I think it, it allows a little bit of freedom for our teachers to really ignite a little bit more joy into the class and excitement, and really say, I don't need to hit this by February 15th or this by March 1st, but really go with the flow of what's happening in their classroom. And if we're looking at the shifts in, in education, I think that's, that's critical.
I'll add too, just that MCAS has never been an assessment that's helpful to teachers in that year, because you don't get the results until after that group of students has left. So we can identify trends, and it helps us kind of compare things, but you know, our teachers are getting the in-moment assessments, mid-terms and things like that, projects that students are doing. So I think it's going to just enhance our teaching and learning that's going on in the classroom.
And I'll add to you, Mr. LaVassar mentioned skills-based, and you know, we developed the portrait of a graduate now six years ago, and it really focused on skills. And of course, we use the rigorous content to practice those skills and master those skills, but by taking away the dictated curriculum by a certain date, it allows more time for the teachers to dive in and practice those skills. And as you know, we've been talking about the best practices now for three years. You know, we're talking about deeper learning, and you ask kids about really meaningful educational experiences that they've had. And we did the same with the educators, which is how we came up with that list, and lo and behold, it matches with research and the Desi work as well. None of the experiences that the adults or the kids have shared, especially this year through Student Voice, have said, well, it's studying for the MCAS exam that's really entirely. So I think if we are going to stand as a district behind the portrait of a graduate for all of our kids, and that these practices happening in our K-12 classrooms for all kids, I think that's, that really narrow hurdle of the MCAS should not be a graduation requirement. And so, you know, us in central office and the high school staff are recommending that you consider striking that from the policy. But while we have all the experts in the room, happy to take questions or comments or feedback.
Anyone have questions, Collins? So Colleen and Kevin?
I just wanted to say, I appreciate this, all the feedback from you guys who are doing the, you know, you're on the front line. I do think that we have an issue with engagement, as we saw from our challenge success data. We could definitely do more to boost our engagement, and I think this is absolutely critical to that. I also think the stress level of students around the MCAS will go down if the educators aren't being held to these deadlines, which sort of force, try to force-feed students at the last minute, and, and their, their stress goes up. And I can tell you, you know, our home, we, we all dread the MCAS. So I think without that added pressure of what it means, I think that it would benefit everyone.
Yeah. Okay. I'm going to have a dissenting view, and lots of questions. So if you look at the voting in our district, Dover Sherburne, our constituents voted in favor, majority, in both. And we send out surveys to parents all the time, equity, inclusion, but we're now going to send, make a decision that affects every single child, that's a big decision, and we haven't looked to include parents in a survey. So I think, I'd like to make a motion later on that we should have a survey about this, because it's something our constituents voted to keep, and we're looking to exclude it. So maybe that motion should include something that has a pro-con supplement, so the parents can read through, click through, and as they get to the end of that, they can make a decision whether they think it's worth saving or not saving. Because it's, it's too important not, and I think people will be surprised, good or bad, but it's too important. I think as a matter of motion, I would like to have had more than...
It's just the first read.
Yeah, yeah, but yeah, it's, it's too important to like, yeah, so need more time to dissect through that. And I have lots more.
You have lots more.
Oh, yeah, lots more. Yeah. And then tracking the data. So like, human tendency is to do the least amount to get the biggest result. So if you tell me something's not worth something, I put no effort into it. To say that then the data from the MCAS is going to be valuable for us to research, dubious. Garbage in, garbage out. They're not going to put the effort in, and we're going to interpret something that is not there, because the effort wasn't put in. And then, like, how, how's MEKO tracked? Like, we saw that MEKO students do better than Boston Public Schools, but now we're sending it to all the other parts. Like, so the only thing that's consistent among district would be MEKO, or sorry, MCAS. Like, look at these MCASs compared to districts, and are MEKO students. Trades, trades vocational, they use these MCAS scores to say, is there a minimum necessary standard for these students to perform at a job level? So it's not, it's not a light decision. You don't need to, don't be the first, we don't need to be the last. We can do things with moderation, we can pump the brakes, we can like, let someone else make a mistake. Perfect example, as SATs, everybody thought they should go away. Single biggest marker of how well you'll do at an institution is your SAT score. I interview residents to become doctors, single biggest predictor of your ability to do well is your board scores. It's not how you did on your rotation or how people felt with your board scores. So before we go ahead, and the stress, there's good stress and there's bad stress. Facebook, Instagram, bad stress, good stress. Get amped up to pass something, showing perseverance to get through the test, I'm feeling proud about it. My mom, to this day, grew up in the Bronx, talks about passing a residency exam in New York City. She never went to college, she graduated high school, it was a proud moment. So there's other things we need to think about. Tests, doctors, lawyers, trades, military professions, organizations, all have tests. Like it or leave it, the results of those tests determine what you do get or don't get. So that stress is productive stress. There's bad stress, and there's productive stress. I just think there's my, my prevailing counter, like, just devil's advocates that we need to think about before we make this large decision.
Thank you very much. That was very well outlined. Angie?
So I, I'm the policy person, so this is what I want, because I spoke with our rep from the state on this, and she said, we do have to, you know, decide what we're going to do. And it's my understanding that we will still do the MCAS, right? It's just not going to go towards a graduation requirement. And, right, that's the proposal. And as it stands now, I know many families opt out of having their kids take the MCAS. So if, if we don't have that as a high school requirement, I, I just feel like, how will it penalize us if we, if, if we're saying, like Kevin said, you have to take it, but the state has said it's not, how does that work for us? Does anybody know? Because, you know, if we have people who opt out, because we say you don't have to, I mean, even now, people keep their kids home. So I'm trying to figure out how, like, if, if we go down the path and say, okay, we're still going to keep it, but then we have people who pull back, what does that, does that affect funding for us or anything else like that? I'm trying, no?
It wouldn't affect funding, but, Jim, do you want to speak to the, MCAS is really not an official option, they just keep their kids home?
Yeah, so right now, the, the way that that works through eighth grade is like the opt-out, and then for that 10th grade test and that ninth grade test, there's not really that option as of now. So if a student is absent, there are the designated MCAS days, but then there is a two-week window where the first day where that student returns to school is when they would be taking that test.
Okay.
And they would receive, if, we have had a couple families over the years, they would receive a certificate of completion through Dover Sherburne High School, not an official diploma. What they have used in that case is they have used that certificate of completion and have petitioned colleges and universities that their son or daughter may apply to, and use that as evidence that they have made, they have met the standards of the high school, yet they disagree with the fact of a statewide assessment being in place. And then it's really up to the universities whether they accept it.
Because I, I, I am more infro adopting this policy that we have proposed. I, I understand that there are testing standards, I'm a lawyer, so I had to take the LSAT, I had to pass the bar, did all that. My daughter, who does not standardized test well, but yet she went to a major university in all honors and never made below an A+. And she, you know, she would get very nervous during these tests, but that was not a predictor, and she's going on to be a nurse anesthetist. So I don't think standardized tests are, you know, the only, the all predictor. That's it.
Yeah. So I just wanted to say, I'm glad that Mr. Cuddy aside brought up MEKO and maybe high need students, because one of the things that I would not be in favor of striking this, except that when I've done the deep dive that Debbie was talking about into the data, the students that score in the lower, you know, like the kids who are close enough passing, or, you know, one, one or two points away, those are already students that are getting small group instruction, co-taught classes, a lot of them are already identified through private fours or IEPs. And so I feel like as, just like in the regular course of the teaching, the strength of my department, Chris's department, and Allison's department, we are already identifying students who need more support. So if that was, if we weren't supporting those students, I would be like, okay, we really need this data. And then to the question of, you know, why would kids, you know, try their hardest? I don't know. In talking to my AP juniors, I don't know if they were already trying their hardest to begin with, because they knew, my AP juniors knew, I can probably pass, pass this without trying my like super duper hardest. So like, the other day, we were talking about last year's MCAS, there was three articles about woolly mammoths, I don't know why, and the kid said, oh, I didn't, there's three of those, I didn't even read them. You know, like, they were like, ugh, and I was, but they still passed. So I think my question is, I want the data, I want the, I want the analysis, but I don't know that that's the end-all, be-all. I would much rather look at how are they doing on their final exams, their final projects, how are they doing in our classes? Because I don't know that the state, I think the MCAS is a good measure for some students, but to your point, I don't know that it measures, you know, just in the same way that I have AP students that get an A in my class and a two on the exam. Like, I just worry about focusing too much of our instruction just on the data. You know, I like that we can do the data analysis. I am, you know, to be honest, like, you know, nervous that kids start to really, you know, phone it in, but I feel like the Adams Scholarship is still there, and it is still something we look at for course placement, like level placement, like not, you know, it comes in November, so it's like, you know, not, not as, you know, when we would want it, but I, it's not data that we don't use. So I guess, I think it would be in the messaging to the students in terms of this is still a measure of data. And the same way the SATs don't impact their English score. You know, we have CP students who get great scores and honor students who don't get great scores, you know, it just becomes another data point. So I hear Mr. Cuddy's concerns though about the community. You know, I certainly want parents to feel like, and families to feel like they can ask questions about it. I ran it by my, you know, my family, just to see like, what are some questions you might have? So I, I think that's, that's like a totally valid, you know, exercise, because I don't want people to think we're just lowering the standards by taking it away, which is certainly not our goal.
So this is more of like a qualitative as opposed to a quantitative data response here too. And I think we're really lucky where we have a lot of students come back and, and visit. I always realize that there's the fall breaks for colleges, because all of a sudden, there's some alum who are trickling into the building. But almost all of them immediately talk about how prepared they feel for college, and the things that they discuss are the position paper, they talk about the rigorous math curriculum, and it's, it's rigorous for sure, and their labs and sciences. And so for me, again, I, I think that the work that these teachers are doing day in and day out are the indicators of how strong a district Dover Sherburne is and, and why I'm so proud to work where I do. And for the kids to come back, and those are the, the measurements that they're talking about as opposed to some of those standardized testing, even the kids who have near-perfect scores on their, their SATs or ACTs, I, it's almost every time that position paper is what they're talking about. They're like, oh, we had our first long, long writing in, in my seminar class in freshman year, and it was a breeze for me, and some of my classmates are sweating. So it's just, again, not a quantitative data point, but definitely a qualitative.
Must have felt really yesterday, because all the position papers were due, or so I hear.
I was really struck by the, the amount of hours, the time spent on MCAS preparation. That's a lot of hours, I mean, you know, just within a subject. What are some of the things, is this, some of that, that time would still be used to prepare them, but not for MCAS, just more, more holistic?
Yeah, and I think being more responsive, I think Mr. Vara spoke with us, being more responsive to where the class is. So if a student, you know, if a class is really interested in a certain topic, I would love to be able to dive into that topic and not say like, okay, we got, you know, 30 minutes for this topic. So I, I think that test prep, the kids don't love it because it's test, no one loves test prep, but, but I think it would be replaced by hopefully engaging things that we have to sometimes put to the side or dive in deeper into a topic that we sometimes can't do because of the timeline, like the artificial timeline. It's even bio within June, but it's still so much stuff.
So much stuff. It's so content-driven, and it's such a huge number of topics that need to be covered. You know, we'll still get to those topics, but to have the ability to dive into a topic in greater depth, do an inquiry-based lab, do some more experiential learning, things that really will increase the engagement of students is so important.
I was thinking that the inquiry base is just gone, it's all just, when you, when you're just teaching to a test.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, and that's what we feel like the district's moving in a direction that we appreciate, which is engagement, inquiry-based, curiosity, discovery, but this requirement is sort of counter to where that district seems like it's going.
I know, again, Ms. Collins, just speaking for her for a quick moment, they use a lot of their, their warm-ups with MCAS questions, and a lot of the teachers actually plan on kind of still utilizing some of those, because they found some great kind of tricky questions that they're using. And so some of that time specifically for the math department will necessarily go away, but it can be more strategically placed that makes sense for their curriculum as opposed to the random refresher as we get closer to the dates.
Angie, I think it's still important to have the test as Mr. Smith referenced, as kind of a data source. I think it has value there, certainly in the ways he had mentioned. And I, you know, Kevin, I think you have created a compelling case for people to think about. When I, I was following the November vote like wildly every day, looking at the globe, reading the comments and everything, and I was surprised, because as we went up to that vote, many people still felt like they were voting to keep the test or to get rid of the test.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, which is very different.
You know what I mean? Like, which is very different than using it as graduation requirements or not using it as such. And I, and, you know, I work, you know, all know I work with kids. It's my career choice. It always has been. And I have seen multiple sides of this, like anyone in the room. And as science department here, I think we can actually get more value out of it if it's, I mean, it's not really an eighth grade requirement anyway. But if you take away anxiety around the test and you say, look, do it, do what you can do here. We've, we've practiced, here's your chance to shine. We have plenty of other assessments that aren't graduation requirements. We give to kids, um, like Star Math is something we use in NEEDOM. There are ways to kind of measure what kids can do relative to other districts and specific to certain skills within a content area. I do think the test will have value there. I don't want to lose sight of that. Uh, I think we could look and say, if kid, if, if things start to drift because kids just are taken as a joke, then maybe we can tighten it. But, um, but I hear you. And I, I think when we're trying to understand what that vote was based on, what kind of knowledge? And we want to maybe just say, here's the pro and con of this, because it's not a perfect solution, whether we keep it or not. But just something to think about and involve more voices. Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. So I would say, so it's 998 hour, 990 hours.
Yes.
So we're talking about 5% of their time. The other 95% is back to the teachers. So I'm saying it's not 5% of the time. Cause I added it up. It's 51 hours. It's 51 hours.
5% sounds like a lot though.
Plus 5% of one year, really.
Yeah, but.
So 990 divided by four.
I'm giving you an A. I'm giving you 95 back, you know?
Yeah.
If you look at it that way. So what I'm, my point is, it's too important not to send out some type of community buy-in. And it is my belief that human tendency is to not put any effort in when there's no reward at the end. I personally would be like, I'm out. It's pointless.
I don't know. I mean, there's no reward at the end of the eighth grade test.
No, what I'm, I'm saying is that it's for the MCAS. So like.
The, the eighth grade MCAS is no reward.
Just never, I would, I'd be like, yeah, whatever.
We, we still work at that eighth.
I could be wrong. I could be wrong.
I know from just my experience, and it's NEEDOM, it's a different town, but kids still take it seriously because they know that like, it's a reflection on them, their school, their teacher. And I just not trying to argue, I'm actually trying to like put you at a little bit of ease. It's not a graduation requirement for eighth grade. We still have one in math, social studies, oh, social studies this year, um, English and science. And like the kids actually are supported to kind of relax and do their best, you know? Some kids do quite well, others, you know, they struggle and, and it's fine, but we just use it as the data. It's important data for us. Um, I think that's a pretty healthy spot. But anyway, it's, we're not going to solve it tonight or to vote on it tonight. You brought up some good points and I appreciate that.
Just one thing I want to say, I think we are all a product of doing in school. And so I think one of the things we're trying to fight against is, well, why would I try if it doesn't count for anything? Like just as teachers, you know, I just feel like I want them to do their best because doing your best feels good inherently. And not for, you know, teacher evaluation or real estate values or any of those other things. I want them to just do their best. And so I feel like, sort of ironically, I think if we can shift towards engagement, portrait of a graduate, best practices, I do think kids will rise to the occasion without the carrot or the stick of the score. That's just, you know, my experience in, you know, 20 years of teaching AP Lang. You know, I just feel like they just get a lot more out of the class when I don't focus too much on the score. And I focus more on inquiry, discovery, curiosity.
And a total example of just the kind of caliber of kid we have. So think about our AP government for a minute, and it's a full-year course. When Mr. Bork assigned some of these simulations, they're not really a lot of points compared to the exams, compared to the mid-years, the finals, et cetera. Our students prepare so well for those simulations and take those simulations so seriously when in fact, they probably wouldn't have to if they just looked at it solely from a numbers standpoint. But to Mr. Healy's point, they want to do well for themselves. They want to make their teacher proud. They want to show that they have mastered material and can apply it in a simulation example, whether it's a Supreme Court case or whatever the case may be. And I actually think that when I observe classes and teachers, we see a lot of that happening during the day. When kids are conducting labs in science, they're not just trying to go A to Z to complete it and finish it. They want to also show the teacher that, hey, I understand this. And by the way, here's a question I have when I went through this process that I'm not sure about, or, you know, in some cases I've seen another student help another student. So there's always valuable to the paper pencil examination. It always will have its place. The engagement of learning in each of those classes will always be more valuable.
And I'll just, to add to the conversation, uh, the student advisory council at Dunny and I worked with this year as part of Student Voice, both Esther, who you know usually who's here as our student council rep, and Evelyn, who's here tonight, were both on it. And one of the, the air, three areas that they decided were of importance to them was the MECO transportation. It was community building between the middle and high school. And the third was looking at graduation requirements. And then taking a deep dive into all of our comparable districts. Our graduation requirements are, have the highest standards in terms of how many years of English, math, science, social studies and world language that kids take. So not only do we want them to pass the minimum, we have them go, welcome beyond that and hold them accountable to it before they leave us. So I think, you know, to the point, our rigor and our expectations are higher than our comparable districts anyways. And again, I just want to restate the fact that, um, I very much value your point. And if it's the will of the committee to get student, our parent feedback, happy to do that. Happy to provide information. I do worry that people were misinformed when they went to the ballot. And I want to make sure that they have a complete understanding of what you all heard tonight and an opportunity to weigh in and ask questions. And if, again, that's the will of the committee. And I do think that this work has been going on now for six years. And for us to keep MCAS as a graduation requirement and as the North Star for the district would completely cross that out and say, that's not what we believe in. And I think that, given the strategic planning process that both Andrew Keo went through and that Debbie and I have gone through, all of the voices that weighed in, we can certainly go back and make sure that they, people weigh in on this specifically, the MCAS piece, absolutely. And I think we have to keep in mind all those voices that have weighed in.
Well, I was going to say too, I mean, I know in voting, many people that I talked to, my daughter being one of them, said, oh, I can't believe they're not going to give the MCAS. I'm like, what do you mean they're not going to give the MCAS? And she goes, well, it got voted away. It's like, no, no, no. It got voted away as a graduation requirement. And I said, you know, that's why you read so carefully. You read every little word. It, it, we are still going to do, and I mean, the, the thing about Dover Sherburne is, um, I don't know if anyone's noticed, but we're really competitive. So no matter if it matters or not, um, they're still going to compete because it's bragging rights. Whether it's in, you know, we have the best play, we have the best, uh, we have the best debate team, we have the best soccer team, you know? It, it, that's what it is. It's, and they're still going to try. I mean, I know my son, he's always like, oh, I don't want to take MCAS. But then when it comes in, he's like, oh, look how good I did. I mean, there's, because I'm always like, yeah, just do what you do. And, you know, he acts like he doesn't care, but then yet when he comes back, he's like, look, I'm, I'm, I'm way above in this. And I was like, yeah, but you could get better than that. He's like, I'll stop. I'll work on that next time. I mean, but, you know, it's not like, and I mean, I think if any of the kids who are here that say, oh, I don't care, that's a complete outlier. That's just me. And I know the parents, I know we say we don't push the kids, but we do.
Maybe Toa has something. Or Toa, it depends on Toa.
Yes, Toa.
Yeah. Hi. Um, I had a question. So I was thinking, if these teachers are not spending so much time preparing kids for MCAS, I thought all this, all these years that MCAS is also very cumulative, right, of what they learn from the beginning. So how, how good do you think our kids will be doing? I think they'll do pretty good even without the preparation that the teachers are spending so many, 5% of their time doing. I, I would like to hear what, what John and Tim and all the, um, heads think about it.
So I, I'll certainly just say a quick piece. Toa, I do agree that some kids would do well because they have learned all the way through. I think for some students, it's a type of testing that they very well could struggle. Uh, in some cases, if they have moved in or they've gone to different school districts. So a lot of it would depend upon the environment. Uh, in terms of the work that's being done, yes, it's always above and beyond that. But we also, like anything else, want to make sure that kids understand what that test looks like, what the types of questions that they ask are. Because a lot of times in testing, that's what happens. That's why we spend so much money with SAT prep and AP prep and all these things. It's not just the content, it's the skill sets that are needed in order to do well on these tests.
I understand. Yeah, thank you.
One, one more quick point too. I, I think it's also important to remember that, um, this isn't the only, um, quote unquote, high-stakes test that students are taking through their high school career. And those SATs, those ACTs are still very much talked about. And what it means to go into those assessments, um, and right now we're in the midst of our AP exams. And I, I think it's important to note that one thing that our school has done in the eight years that I've been here is try and open up those AP classes to more students for more access. And so as opposed to saying, we need only students who are going to get a four or a five on this exam. I know Gretchen and I have talked about this ad nauseam of saying like, no, let's allow students to sweat a little bit, to feel a little bit of that comfort, uh, excuse me, a little bit of uncomfort in these classes that may be a little bit higher than what they quote unquote, think that they can achieve. But that opportunity is a great space for them to, to feel that, um, that productive pressure.
And more than 50% of the students take AP Lang.
Yeah.
Just in response to the cumulativeness of it, one thing to note is the science one is a little bit unique in that, and they remove chemistry. So there's no more chemistry MCAS. They only offer biology MCAS and physics MCAS. Our kids predominantly take the biology MCAS, but it's not based on long-term. It's based on one year of content, which is a little bit unique. Um, so that's where, that's where it does get challenging. Kid transfers in halfway through the year and those sorts of situations.
I have to put you on the spot, but I know that, um, you all have been advocating for students to try at least one AP before they graduate. Do you know what percentage of students take at least one?
I think it was like 71%.
I understand. I think it was around 70.
Yeah.
Our AP government teacher has five whole sections. It's 115 seniors.
Out of 160.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not even sure my high school had AP classes when I was there. Well, this has been a helpful conversation, I think, and it brought up some points. I do think it's, you know, no test is going to be perfect anyway, but any test can give you some insights. So, you know, it has value somewhere and we have to figure out what that is going to then look like. We're not voting tonight. So, uh, is there anything else to add or are we unable to move on for tonight?
I just wanted to thank you, Kevin, for voicing your perspective. I think that there are so few places now where you can have civil and healthy discourse. So I appreciate you.
Yeah, no problem.
I second that.
And if it's, I get totally overturned. It's cool, but it was brought up.
Yes.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the committee in terms of next steps?
I mean, what do you think? I can, I could write a position paper if you want. I'm keeping it as a data source.
So just like, I would just, sorry for. But like, if we do a survey, you could design it such that they have to read the pro, they have to read the con.
Yes.
Right? They have this, the, the administration can put their two cents in there as far as how it will or will not affect the school year. And then you vote. So rather than having it at the front, you know, behavioral economics, we force them to read through it. And then we can say, you had the opportunity to read through it. And so everybody's informed. So then when it comes to the school year and it's changed and we do away with it, everybody has that opportunity to see it.
Who votes? The parents and the students who are exposed to it?
It should be, no, it should be just like a survey. So, yeah, so whoever you feel is, should be included.
I was just wondering if the students are the ones taking it. So I do feel like they need a voice because we keep wanting student voice. So.
That's fine. But I'm saying the constituents also, I was just, yeah, so.
Well, not all, I mean, I would say it's the parents of this.
That's what I'm saying, voters. So anybody who voted.
Well, I mean, not all the constituents have children. I know my neighbors who are in their eighties voted, one of them voted to have it because she didn't understand. But then the other one was like, oh no, because she had grandchildren. She understood. So.
And that'd be great. What if we, it just gets blown out and everybody says, yeah, get rid of it then. That's a good.
I just want to make a point too, and I, and I, I know I haven't said anything, but I appreciate all these views. I'm not anti-doing a survey, but I do caution, and this might not be popular to say out loud, that a survey is not a vote. Right? So, um, I think a lot of times when we give out a survey, it can be confusing to people who think, oh, but we voted this and, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a vote. It's information. And, and it's, I'm not saying it's not valuable to gather information, but that would need to be made clear.
Sure. It's a data point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we don't have to just, you know, choose our next step due to the survey. It's just another data point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, sure, there's an app for that, right? Educators in terms of making them read something or watch something before they can answer the questions?
Can you do it through parent squared?
Yeah, sure. Yeah. But there's somebody asked that they use with kids that you have to watch or read something before you can respond.
Which I would like to use at home.
So kind of stuck on what we do. Do we decide a course of action before and vote on it? Is that?
Or you can say, I don't want to do, send out a survey.
Get Jenny the work to do if you'd like, or you can say, let's talk about it again in June.
So wait, so this was the first read, right?
Yeah.
So even on a first read, it is just what it is. And I mean, then I say, when it comes to the second read, if we have an extra data point, then we interject that in and perhaps then we go back and say, well, we need to refresh and do another read as a first read. That's, that's the policy part of me, which I've been living with now for two years and I may die with the policy. Cause it's going to kill me. We're getting close.
No, no, no.
We're getting close.
Okay. Then in terms of timeline, would we aim for a survey before June so that we can do a second read with a bit of data? Too fast. And it was a busy time here. It's a crazy time here. So.
I know sometimes the sticking point when we try to do surveys is like, what are the questions going to be?
Yeah.
Or like, how do we, you know, raise it out there? But, um, in the pack, and I noticed like there was some like pretty good information. So I just wanted the committee to think about, is that too much information? Is that the right amount of information? Cause it's already there. And I think it was a good summation of what we had talked about collectively. But I don't, I also don't, you know, I know May, December is happening for parents where there's so many things. So I don't know. I don't want to give them too much. So I just, if we found a good survey, I would love for it to clarify. Cause I also have neighbors that were very confused about the vote. So I think it makes sense to gather more data. I don't want it to be too long, but I don't want it to be too short.
What if instead of a survey, we offered out some information, you know, the right amount? I mean, be accurate, but not overwhelming. And, and welcome to feedback as opposed to the survey. Would that be more work or less work? Or would that be helpful? Yeah.
Well, the feedback, you would have collate all different opinions. And the survey would be like, yes, no, a percentage.
That's a good point. Yeah.
I mean, I know when, we've done surveys this year and we have the students and the, and I, I really do think we should have some student voice as well.
As you heard, they love surveys.
Yep, that's one they might answer. Yeah, that's true.
What about, um, maybe a parent Zoom where the people could bring concerns and there could be information, maybe from educators or videos from educators that you could present? I think hearing from educators is really honestly the, the most, um, that's the most weighty with me, wholesome weight with me. Because you guys know how much of, how much you have to think about the MCAS and how much of your, your planning is based on this sort of, you know, obscure test that doesn't have that much to do with what you're actually teaching day to day. I, I think that's really powerful for the community here from the educators. The kids are going to say, no, I don't want to take the test. They'll just say, no, I mean, I can kind of, no. Why are you asking? So, um, but I think that.
They have to take the test.
Right.
I think what we're saying is, you know, is this, is this about, I mean, and I think that we can ask them if it's a value to them for their graduation requirement. Cause I can tell you, my kids who, my own children who took the AP and they all scored so that they could exempt those. I mean, my daughter exempted an entire year, but it couldn't help her because she was a nursing student. So she had to stay the whole four anyway. So I'm like, just keep taking more classes. But, you know, she could have arguably graduated after really two and a half years from college. So I mean, it, it, I feel like our teachers do teach where they need to to the test. That's valuable for students to benefit them in the most efficient way possible. And it enhances their learning. And that's the thing, MCAS I think does give us a baseline, but I just don't want to be teaching to a test. And that's the thing, MCAST I think does give us a baseline, but I just don't want to be teaching to a test all the time.
It gives us information about trends. It doesn't give us much information about individual students because, you know, a valuable assessment allows for going back and seeing what you did wrong, seeing how you can correct where the gaps are in the learning with individual students. You're not, we're not able to do that with the MCAST. Educators, you know, like you said, their students have moved on when they get that data. So it really only gives us large, you know, scale trends. As a parent, it hasn't been very, I hide them because I just don't want the kids competing about them. So they'll say, "Where are my MCAST?" "I don't know." I probably shouldn't say that. But they, you know, it just, it's stress for them that, you know, I know they're getting a quality education here. There's no doubt about that. And the educators that they have are the reason for that, and giving them more time to do, you know, what they're best at makes so much sense to me.
And the vote has to be in June?
Yep. I mean, the teachers are ready to graduate next year, so once they sift their senior year and do what they need to do to pass their courses. So you have time.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, you know, whether we do a survey or however we ask for more information, if we do that, I do fear that this is a time of year that people are overwhelmed and starting to check out. And if we want that to be valuable, can we, can we do that in the fall? Or maybe people are, they've had a break, they're ready to be more focused.
Yeah, thinking about the school year ahead, once maybe during the fall, instead of just trying to get off and be on summer or not. Yeah. So I also, my gut was thinking, "It's better for the fall. I'm not trying to kick it down the road and I won't be here." I will, I'm happy to be a community member at that point. No, but I could, happy to.
Paul's just trying to tell me.
Be a part of it. Yeah. I mean, I will say, I honestly, I said earlier, decades of really care about all of this and all sides. I do think it's, why is it any different than other tests? Like, why does this one have to be attached to graduation? That would only be if it's such an important and meaningful test, right? And removing it from graduation doesn't mean we don't still look at what we can, the insight, the data. If kids are slumping a little bit, well, then their math teacher's going to say, "Look, this is a standard we are, we're slumping on. We're going to work harder on that standard." You know, if anything, it'll probably get us more focused on areas that are starting to not engage kids, right? Or not connect in some way. You know, again, I work with middle schoolers. They don't have to pass the MCAST to move to high school, yet they still try. You'd be surprised. They still work at it when they're in there. You know, I don't see if a kid is not going to be connecting on the MCAST, forcing them to jump through several hoops to say, "Now you've proven you can graduate." Like, that, to me, doesn't make sense personally. But I'm open to supporting making sure people are informed with their understanding of this. Absolutely.
And I know, I live in Franklin, and there's a lot of stuff happening, you know, just the budget and all that stuff. And they have a lot of listening sessions, so I think we would be willing, like, if you wanted to, you want in May or June, like, the department head will be there, like, you know, on a Zoom, and then maybe one September or October. Like, I definitely want the community to understand what the vote is, obviously, but also that we're not trying to lower standards. We're in fact trying to lean into sort of a high level of engagement that we want.
All right. So.
Because I'm standing, I didn't come up with a proposal of how to roll out input and getting input and a timeline for your committee.
Sure. Yes, please. Yes. And you can sign up a bunch of, yeah, yeah.
Maybe you should resolve yourself that you shouldn't really vote in June. I always think of June as the first meeting of all the new committees. It's hard to take something from May to June when you're having changeover.
Yeah. And Kevin and Al helps, too, with the survey stuff.
Thank you. And the Policy Subcommittee will be looking at all of Section I for the first time in June and not voting on it until the fall, so it actually makes sense to wait on I, K, F, or whatever this is.
So that way we can make sure, so we'll get together and we'll get what's on for the summer.
Have to.
I always think, too, that back-to-school night is such a valuable night. You could have. It's the only time you got people, though.
Sure, it's gonna be five hours next year. That's on the agenda. Well, thank you all for coming, and I do want to remind everybody that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate you. Did y'all get like 50 extra emails this week from like advertisement places? We appreciate you. You can get 5% off.
Free Duncan, Annas Pats, Nurse Appreciation Week.
The most important ones they got were actually from our kids. My favorite was, the gym I go to is all class-based, and educators go to the 11:00 AM class Monday through Friday this week for free.
I thought you said 11:00 PM.
Thank you. All right. So we do have one more discussion item. Updates to the Athletic Handbook, a first read.
So Emily Thelvin, our athletic director, and Cam Slano, our trainer, went through the Athletic Handbook, which is similar to the Student Handbook and the Program Studies, is obviously approved by the school committees. And it's like when you ask educators, including myself and Denny, to serve as lawyers, it's like you strike out and you redline.
Yeah.
As you can see, they stroke out, and then they highlight and redline.
I thought I was just not reading it correctly.
Yeah.
They did take a lot of time to show you what they'd like to remove through strikes and what they'd like to add through the red highlight.
Yes.
You'll notice there's many minor changes, nothing substantive. Is that the word, Angie? And then the, you know, big need at this point coming out of last year, you know, we had a mosquito trampoline problem before COVID, then COVID happened, and mosquitoes and trampoline were the least of our concerns, but they're back. And so they, we collaborated with the boards of health to come up with this policy. They're both in favor of it, and they'd like to include it. So if you have any questions relative to the suggested changes, I'm happy to attempt to answer them now or take them back and return at a later time with the answers.
And this is also a first read?
First read, yeah. So I guess I'm an outgoing member of the Athletic Advisory.
And I, I mean, my read-through was largely just updates and lining it up with current practices.
Yep, yep. So if you find something, you know, as you continue to review it, you can send feedback to me and.
And one thing that's actually going to come up in my report, and I see that it's actually highlighted in here, is when we increased the activity, the sports fee to 335, we changed the family cap to four. I think we're seeing that it has a greater impact than we thought. And I will be honest, people still pay, and I, we spend all of our time with refunding checks. So I think that was one thing that I've been talking about with athletics. They were going to analyze that for us over the last couple and say, "If we went back to the five," so don't raise the fees, but go back to five, it might be less than like, I don't know, $5,000 to $10,000, but they feel like it's more equitable to do, when you look at the family. I think we went with the four because we just were trying to couch it going up to 335. And remember, we went up to $35 to pay for all the volunteer coaches that we brought in? So rather than increasing the fee, that's one thing we're thinking we would like to talk to school committee about. It wouldn't probably go into effect till probably '27 unless we did something now, or in the fall for '26. But they have that highlighted there, but I just wanted to shed some discussion that we've been having about that. And as always, they have it highlighted that there is, you know, hardship is definitely, and we, I see, I see those partial payments, reduced payments and stuff coming through, so I know it's happening.
Good. Any questions or feedback at this point, or you want some more time to chew on it? Athletic Handbook?
Oh, I'm good.
I thought, yeah. I mean, you know, I noticed that the fee went up. I mean, it seems like, too, they're just trying to light some of the language.
Yep.
To make it more.
Danny, you should join our Subcommittee.
Oh, yeah, I know.
And Lucy, you may feel like you're pushed to your edge, but you always seem so calm, so I think that's why I feel like, "Take time more."
She won't break.
All right. Well, any further questions or comments? Nope. Perfect. Next, do we have action items for approval?
We don't, but I don't know if you want to circle back to finances first or the Superintendent Collins first. It's up to you.
Oh. Well, we're all here all night, right? So how about we go, can we do Superintendent Collins first? And then.
Then we'll go back and order.
Financial reports, just kind of cascading back up.
Sure. Okay. So, and it might have briefed because we were just together not long ago. But again, thanks to Evelyn for presenting the feedback from the town meetings and then her survey. And again, she is here on Esther's behalf tonight because Esther was over at the cafeteria doing, she and her sister organized, which is a community showing of student artwork, including photography, drawings, music. So that was super exciting. So congratulations to Esther, our representative, for pulling that off tonight. It was great. As you know, we had a legal workshop with Justin Gomes last week that we were able to review Title IX bullying, harassment, and due process. And I do have some notes and information I'll share out with the committee members that weren't able to join us. It seems like there is a strong interest from our committees, all three of them, to follow up with a second workshop. So I reached out to Attorney, Michael Joyce, thank you, who is an expert in civil rights law and Title IX, to find out when he might be available to meet with the free committee, so I will let you know. And again, I understand that it's May and June, and then we will try and make the time that will allow people to come and listen without overdoing the schedule, but knowing that this is important to the committee as I indicated. Congratulations to the Middle School, Cassie Grove, Allison Wonderland, another wonderful showing this weekend. It's always fun to see them in action. Town meetings, both Dover and Sherburne communities have held their town meetings, and the turf passed at both levels. 69% approval at Sherburne, which equates to six votes, over the necessary. And at Dover, it was a 97% vote, it was hands down, no questions asked, the draft of elections. So we'll be moving forward with the vote visit to the election and how to fund this. So thank you to all those who came out.
Yeah, that's the last piece. Sherburne, if you can go Tuesday. And just vote for the funding mechanism for the turf.
And you get a sticker.
I still get a sticker.
And the last update, unless, you have one, maybe? No, okay. The last update is just, as you know, unfortunately, we had a bus incident yesterday, and we are so thankful that nothing happened to our middle school student. And since then, we have collaborated with the police, Dawn, circle back to Conley, our best company, to make sure that we are all doing everything we can with stop signs and lights, which we did have in place yesterday, and still wasn't enough. And as Dawn can speak to, we can't necessarily have our bus drivers cross the yellow lines into the other lane to show that something's happening to the cars that are coming because it's illegal to cross a lane in a school bus, but they hug the yellow lines as much as they can. And what's interesting is yesterday's incident did not even involve somebody coming this way. It was somebody who was around the bus.
Went around.
Which is also illegal. So, wow.
Oh, my gosh, passing a school bus. Wow, wow.
Esther, is there anything you want to add from all your communications?
Yeah, no, and that was something, too, when we first heard about the accident. That's what we thought. And then talking with all of our people, started talking to the people involved. That's because I had heard that today, too, that it was actually coming from behind, not in front of. I mean, not, you know, not crossing. So they, you know, are continuing to ask questions, but it was actually one of the brand, the police did go over and check out the bus, but it's one of our brand-new buses. So there was no question that everything was working properly.
And automaticity, whenever the door opens, it's not.
So there was a citation given.
Purely driver error. It was not student or bus.
That was fun to hear. Everybody aware of the details in case people are questioning and asking.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Denny, May, or Heather?
Is that a stop that, is that an area where, that's especially dangerous for the kids walking along the road?
Yeah, Route 109, you know, that goes through Westwood and Dover can be busy. There are stops, though, at every meter of kind of.
The entrances of the, you know, the neighbor of the complexes. There is a stop at Tisdale, and then like a little bit further down, there's a stop at the new 61 county. So there are stops right at where they walk. So it's not like they're walking the street. They're going straight into the complex.
What we're finding, though, is sometimes students get off at a different stop to either stay with their friends or there are sometimes cut-throughs, you know, through driveways or woods that get them home faster than actually waiting to get to the stop and then having to walk from there. So we'll continue to make sure our drivers are stopping at every bus stop and giving kids an opportunity officially and hopefully they'll take the shortest, safest route home.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any other comments or questions, please?
No.
All right, perfect. Next, then, we'll go down to the monthly report.
The monthly, so you have the warrant report was just done with the, all the warrants that have been processed since your last meeting in March, all the way through May 1st, so it's pretty accurate. I always thank Colleen for taking the time to sign those warrants on your behalf. Your monthly report, you have your financials as of April 30th. Keep in mind, again, I just highlight in bold, any new information? Read, sometimes it probably reads a little funny because of how we build upon the report. But now that we're at the end of the year on the revenue side, some of those activities and the miscellaneous revenue, I'm now just zeroing out, assuming that at this point in time, there's very little still to be encumbered. And you'll see that our high school athletic fees are about $37,000 under. So changing the four to five isn't going to close that gap. It's partly due to whatever the number is, like that number was, the number that we've been using is probably maybe in a little bit of a higher enrollment, so enrollment's gone down. We haven't tweaked it. It might be something we look at closer. We haven't really tweaked it since COVID, and we raised the rates. But we'll take a look at that. I think that there's still a large number of participation, but numbers are down a little bit for this year in the various sports. So just something that we'll, we'll look at. Fiscal year '26 is set, so it's more than we'll be building information to make any impact for fiscal year '27. And miscellaneous revenue is there as a placeholder. Sometimes we get things in that we don't expect, sometimes we don't. We've gotten a little bit in this year, but at this point, I'm just starting to start trying to show you projections. And as you know, we use part of the revenue variance to offset your fiscal year '26 budget. So we sort of have spoken for, I believe it was $160,000 of that. $202 is going to roll into funding for fiscal year '26. On the operating expenditures, I just wanted to highlight in salaries that we've actually hired our new assistant to the business administrator. She started in the middle of April. And with that now, I had a placeholder in there until someone was hired. But now that she's here, we know her salary and how long she's going to be working until June 30th. We do have a realized savings of approximately $30,000 during this year. Just that the region will also see savings at the two locals since that's a shared position, but that's during, because even since July 1st, that position was partially employed and then fully vacated in November. So we did have some savings with that position being open, so about $30,000. I can tell you is sitting in that number in the business office. Moving over to expenditures, there really isn't any new information. I think we're pretty much in line with where we sort of budgeted. Everything variates a little bit, but I always look at material variances, where we're seeing material variances. And I think that we are obviously seeing some savings in utilities, but there's some strange things going on with utilities, so don't think that that's, there's some, I can't explain it all, but there was some meter changes and such, so I keep waiting to see if we're going to get some bills that could maybe change that variance, but for now, it is showing a positive variance. And then keep in mind that, you know, I just highlight again now that we're coming at the end of the year that there is savings from the World Language Lab upgrade, and that money is staying in the budget, but it also came out in fiscal year '26. And I'm just happy to say that fiscal year '24 is now in the books. You heard the presentation of the financial statements. And in addition to that, since we last met, our report for the end of the year, the compliance report was finalized and has been filed with Desi. And then obviously, the great news about the turf. So one more hurdle on Tuesday night, but I will say our contractor has already been behind the scenes, starting to work, knowing that hopefully that was going to be a positive outcome, so we'll be able to hit the ground running, pun intended, once school gets out, to undertake that. And we'll have a more, by your June meeting, if he knows it's all set, we may have more of a sound timeline to share as far as completion dates. I'm hoping we can tighten up the completion dates a little bit, because as of right now, you know, it's the end of September. So Emily and Cam have worked to schedule some of the games in different places, but depending on the process. the process, we still may be able to use the turf. It's the track that's going to be the last piece to be finished. So there is some opportunity, if everything goes according to plan, to maybe even start using the turf before the end of September. So we'll keep our fingers crossed and keep you updated on that.
Thank you. And do you say, I know Tuesday night is a vote in Sherburne, that's just to decide how they're funding?
Do you have to pass because it's dead exclusion? So like for the historical museum, for the turf, it might have been one other item. It was borrowed money with dead exclusion. The town people have to agree that that can be dead excluded.
So it still has to be voted on?
Yeah. So it's not the project. People are, it's not voting on the project, it's voting on the funding mechanism.
So it's, I mean, people should vote, but.
Oh, yeah, people should vote, but I think people can't. They're thinking, well, I guess it could go down. We've talked about it actually, what would happen if that guy voted down. There is an opportunity to have like a special, another special election to sort of reiterate that this is important. But it's only a majority vote. So if we can, you know, get some of the people, just everyone can just stop by and just place that vote. And there's other things to vote for, school committee members and stuff.
Definitely. It's always a good vote.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, that is a piece that we don't see every cycle that we, that it's that way. So it's that oddity. But it is an important piece of completing the funding of the project from the Sherburne perspective. And I think I included the two chair and vice chair, but the next step is just the select boards of each town has to approve the IMA. So again, they're not approving the turf, they're just approving the mechanism that we're using to fund it between the region and the two towns. And it looks like we might be on the agenda for both meetings, May fifteenth. They both meet virtually. So I'll just ask to be placed in different parts of the agenda.
I remember one time, I remember, I don't remember which one that was, but it went on for hours. Cause I mean, I finally went to use the restroom because I had been on for like four and a half hours. And of course, right when I stepped away and Dawn's like, she's there, I swear she's there. I mean, I've been sitting on one side, I'm like, I'm dying.
It should be an easy, an easy lift, but it is one of those necessary steps. Cause if you remember your draft of the IMA, it actually has the date that each of the three groups approved. And then I will have to have, like, it might be after elections, but this, this committee will have to come and sign, you know, the documents once we get them, signed by all, the complete boards of all three groups.
My son's last final is Monday and I was so excited. I said, oh, good, you can be here to vote.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. Anything else to add, anyone?
Thank you, Dawn, as always.
Thank you very much. So next we have consent items on the agenda. We have donations.
With grants.
And grants, grants.
Just grants.
Metco grant and the nursing grant.
And they're both just increases, which is always a good thing.
So it's that and for a little bit of minutes that you can.
Did we have a minute? I just saw the Sherburne and the Dover.
Yep, page nineteen.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we have the two grants mentioned on page one eleven, Metco grant, nursing grant for additional funds. And on page one eighteen, the.
What version?
Oops.
See, that one's, one twelve or one eight?
Okay. Yes. Go back, maybe that's one twelve. Go back. So. Are there any questions or amendments to the minutes or questions about the grants? Okay, in favor, we'll vote to approve all of these items with a single vote. So may I have a motion to approve the Metco and the nursing grants increases and the consent agenda from March fourth, twenty twenty-five regional school committee meeting? Thank you, Colleen. Do I have a second? Kate Potter, thank you, Kate. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion that carries. Duh. Perfect. Do we still need to?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. I know. Yes. And then towards the end of the packet, we have a bunch of informational items. Let's see.
Help you get through those.
Sure.
So as you know, we belong to two collaboratives, the tech collaborative in Natick, excuse me, in Waukun, and the except collaborative in Natick. So each quarter, we provide you an update from the organizations. When their budgets for the following year for FY twenty-six, in this case, are approved, we share those. So the tech FY twenty-six budget is here, accepts is coming, accepts their executive director has stepped down and there's the interim now serving until they hire someone new. So they're catching up on everything that they, they owe us. So that is forthcoming. And then the tech agreement that you all voted in favor of allowing Sharon to join and fulfill regional, the new agreement is in your packet. So you can see the whole thing. And then the Dover school committee minutes from January are included as well as the Sherburne school committee minutes. Lots of reading.
Yes. Thank you.
But our policy.
All right. Any questions? There is a lot of comments, anything else to add? Good. We can take a thorough look later. But our next meeting is on June tenth. Please note, it's a five-thirty start sign. Is there anything you wish to add to that June agenda, knowing that we're waiting till the fall for en cast? You're welcome to contact. Is it still me or am I?
This way first until you find a new chair.
All right. So please contact them. Until we find a new chair. And.
And then at six-thirty will be the joint. I'll break it. So five-thirty to six-thirty back to back.
Perfect. So five-thirty regional, six-thirty joint. Perfect. If anything else comes up, you have questions, contact Ben. All right. Yeah. So what?
It must feel nice.
It does feel nice. Yeah, it's weird. All right. So our meeting has come to an end. It's now.
I have something that I need to say. So two of you, it's still your last one. You not quite yet, not quite yet. So. So with that being said, I have the honor of thanking you each. And when you do this individually, I'm going to try to get through it without kind. Cause I feel like I've been on the committees with you all for a long time. So that being said, I'm going to start with Kate. Because Kate, first of all, I cannot believe that this is not your last meeting. I met Kate when I was on the elementary school CSA at Pine Hill. And I have to say that Kate was the most welcoming, kindest, most gentle person out of her, and she was always ready to dive in and help. And I should have known then that she would give her all for every committee she serves and all the people that she represents. Kate was our Metco person when I was on the CSA. And even today, when I hear the word Metco, it's synonymous in my head with Kate because she does so much with our Metco students and our Metco staff. And she really makes us all aware of the importance of Metco and also all the advantages that we get of having Metco here with us. So I can honestly say that Kate would help even when something wasn't in her position. Kate was on the Sherburne school committee. And so then when I joined that, she was, she was on there to show me the ropes and what to do and, and explain things to me like circuit breakers, which I thought was a circuit breaker. Not a circuit breaker.
He's on all the time.
And she was like. And I'm like, oh, it's not a certain, nothing, no lights have gone off. And she chaired that committee and I remember that. And she did that with grace and kindness, which sometimes it was a little more difficult than others because, you know, there were a lot of, a lot of issues we had going on because that would start time flip and all that other, all that other things that had a lot of surveys behind them. So, and, and through all of that, all I could think was you cannot look at Kate without smiling. She is always positive. And speaking of which, she served on the athletic advisory, PTO, the positive committee, DSA, many job search committees and committees to fill in on things where we, we need people to come in. She was also chair of the region. So she's, she's had her fair share of cheering. And she was on more committees than I can think of during COVID. And I feel like during COVID, we all really got to know each other because there was never a day off. There was always, we're going to have a Zoom call. I felt like we zoomed all the time.
Cause we did.
We did. We zoomed all the, I was, I was like, am I, am I in my pajamas? I don't even know right now because we saw each other twenty-four seven.
With five hundred people.
Yes, with everyone. And, and I don't know if many of you know, but Kate also is a former educator and it shows through her knowledge of what makes a school run and what it means to touch the lives of students. It goes without saying that Kate has made DSA a better place. So tonight I want to thank Kate for her leadership, her willingness to do whatever it takes to benefit the kids, her outreach in the community to educate us about Metco and society issues. And she has been more than a member of this committee. She has been a great friend and mentor and we will miss you greatly. So now we have Mark. And Mark and I, so Mark and I were, I think we were both chairs of the, the elementary committee at the same time. So there was a lot of, a lot of back and forth. So it's with great sadness too, that we're saying goodbye to Mark, especially because he's looking so excited when he says.
No.
But Mark started on the Dover school committee in twenty nineteen and then on the region in twenty twenty-two. And during his time on school committee, he's worn many hats. During COVID, he was the Health and Safety Liaison. And I'm sure that took zero time whatsoever because there was not much changing. There was not, you know. It was a position that required more time than I can imagine because of all the changing needs and requirements. He served on the interim superintendent committee and conducted the contract negotiations for such. And he also helped us on the superintendent search committee when we found out who he's now.
Well, actually unfortunate, I think I helped on the initial round that flopped, but it led to that.
I'll take credit for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
To fact check, but we ended up better. You didn't defy that first round.
No, no.
But anyway.
That was the issue.
So, and as an, as an educator himself, he understands what, what makes a good administrator. And so in that line, he helps us a lot with our searches, such as with the principal, assistant principal search. And he's done other staff searches while he's been here. He most recently led our superintendent evaluation committee and kept us organized and did the line share, i.e. almost all of the tabulation and slide presentation. It was, it was a total mark show and he led us fearlessly on that. Mark has honed his contract negotiation skills by participation in both the teacher contract negotiations and superintendent contract negotiations. But most importantly, Mark has led this committee this past year and he has done it so well and with confidence and authority and helped us all when we seemed a little lost, confused and kept us all on track. Being on this committee is a collaborative effort and Mark is the epitome of professionalism, organization, thoughtful reflection, patience and kindness. He is always ready to pitch in, live in ear, think in a rational way and look out for the best interest of the community, especially the kids. It is with great sadness for us, but we wish him all the best and hope that he can find other productive ways to fill his time. But thank you is not nearly enough for all that you've done. You've kept us going in the direction that exudes what I would be, believe would be a portrait of a worthy, kind and productive graduate. So thank you both.
Thank you both.
Many years.
How many, how many core values?
Nine.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
I know. Can I just say just like two seconds? I'm not going to be helping and I'm not going to cry. Yes, this is the end of my ninth year, which is crazy. I was thinking about it this week and I even have the June date written in my book because I was just so like, I'll watch. So when we were on, when I started in the Sherburne school committee, you know, aside from school start time, one of the biggest issues was how are we going to get air conditioning in, which is continues to be.
Yeah.
An issue. And then fast forward to COVID, which you never, you know, but I've always just really valued the people who I've worked with. There've been so many different people over the nine years and you know, whether I was in agreement with them or not, it was ninety-nine percent of the time, you know, really thoughtful conversations and as Denny said earlier, that doesn't always happen currently and I, and I'm really grateful for that. Yeah. So I'm also going to, I'm thinking about my next steps, but in the meantime, I want to thank the Sherburne voters for putting their faith in me for so long. And I'll miss you all.
Thank you. And you can rest because Pine Hill is getting air conditioning in their library and their cafeteria.
Okay. What about those upper classrooms?
Well, the library will go up to the upper classrooms and the lower classrooms.
Nine years, okay.
You know, a new book.
Yes.
Yes, well, thank you.
And I'll be super quick. I think you made a lot of great points already. I, I think what inspired me is knowing like there were so many dedicated, competent, really caring, very intelligent people working on trying to problem solve sometimes some complex issues. And I absolutely loved that for the past six years. I think the challenge is you always feel like you're the slacker on the board. So I, you know, I hope that just, you know, I appreciate hearing a reminder of the things that we did go through, but I'm always, now I'm happy to tell Beth, she can put on like a bat signal. I'll be here as just a community member when it's helpful. So it's, yeah. Happy to have a little bit of a break from the evening structure there. Yes, thank you.
Well, I'd like to say thank you as well as I said to, I think it was actually Andy the other day. It's like literally the end of an era, seeing you two step down. I just feel like you've been part of my whole DS experience, you know, as a parent, as, you know, a neighbor and as a, as assistant superintendent, superintendent. Also a realization that our kids are getting older, which my kids are getting older too. So, you know, we'll have fresh blood and new voices and perspective is always helpful. But you will be met. So thank you for all you've done.
Thanks so much.
And Kate, how many negotiations were you on though?
Three.
I know that, that's like remarkable. So I thank you for that.
I'm not going to miss that. It was important and I was honored to do it, but.
Yeah, but you are like, you know, the person who carried the, the history during that time.
I'm happy to be happy to be a, you know, side panel, but.
We'll be doing open negotiations.
Glad to pass the torch.
I would like to say, Kate, I'm going to miss you so much. First of all, there are three things I want to say. I'm going to miss running to the meeting with you to compete, who's going to be the last one.
Thanks, Sean.
And thank you for being my friend and my calm, you know, all the time that I have been like, oh, but Kate, we should be doing, but Kate, we should be doing. And, and your calm and your grace has been tremendous in my life for so many years, all through our kids, the years that our kids have grown together. Thank you, Kate, for doing this.
Thank you.
All right. So the meeting has come to an end. It's now eight twenty-five. May I have a motion to adjourn? Do you have a motion to adjourn? Ooh. May I have a second?
Kate Potter said.
Sorry. All in favor? All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.